Good evening and welcome to the Town Board Work Session on Wednesday, September 14th, 2022. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'd like to call this meeting to order and note that all the Town Board members are present this evening, as well as being joined by our Director of Developmental Services, Carrie Ivors, our Town Attorney, Pete Weiser, and our Deputy Town Clerk, Sue Scheit. Thank you for being here. And moving right on to our approval of minutes from August 10th, may I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll move the minutes of August 10th be approved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Cole and a second by Councilperson Ockenden. Are there any questions or concerns about the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll just take a roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw.
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. Monthly reports are due in. They were due in on the ninth of the month. A few people are still out. I do want to remind our department heads who will be watching this meeting, I'm sure, that monthly reports are due, are due on the odd months, unless you are a department that's every month. Odd months being the numbers 1, 3, 5, 7, 9, 11, okay? So they are due for September. All right. I don't think we have any special guests here this evening, so we'll move right on to our action items, beginning with Action Item A, a request for extended time for a temporary banner at 2129 Five Mile Line Road. Ms. Ivors?
Thank you. And I will note that I believe that Bill John is joining us via Zoom. He's nodding, thank you. I have not had a visual connection with Bill John. He and I have only connected by phone or by email.
I see him, he's here.
So I appreciate the nod, that it wasn't someone else. So this is, you'll recall, the new piano studio at 2129. The applicant did obtain a temporary banner back when the business first opened, to announce opening, and has since obtained a temporary permit through building and zoning for a new banner sign to indicate that enrollment is currently happening or available. The request was for additional time because our, the policy and regulation, how it's implemented, is, limits four weeks per calendar year. And so with the two weeks when the business first opened, and the two weeks now, the open enrollment request is to align with the actual enrollment for new classes for this year as a new business. I will bring up, and you all saw, I think, in the attachment, the sample of what's been posted on the property. And so I wanted just, I indicated to the applicant that this board would be the authority to grant that extension, because it's located in the Four Corners District.
Okay, I'm sure you mentioned it. Just how much of an extension?
It would be an additional two weeks.
An additional two weeks. And I just want to note that this is flush against the side of the building or the fence. It is not sticking out or in the right of way at all?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members?
No, I'm fine with it.
Okay. You know, we always want to be supportive of businesses, particularly new businesses, and in the Four Corners. So if no one has any objections, we're fine with granting the two weeks.
Okay, perfect. And there's no further action than, other than this approval at tonight's meeting?
All right. Good luck to you. Thank you so much. Take care. All right, moving on to Action Item B.
Okay, wonderful. So as you recall, this has been an ongoing application before this board, first with the incentive zoning, and now this is the application for subdivision of land and site plan approval associated with the development of that ancillary parking lot on a portion of 41 Woodhaven Drive. I'm happy to bring up the concept, the subdivision, and the site plan really hasn't changed at all from the time it was submitted, and we reviewed it over the last, last month. They are, they have submitted revised plans just to address technical comments that PRC and Engineering Department identified as part of its review. And so they're in the process of confirming that all comments have been addressed. And so I have no concerns or hesitation that that's going to happen or has already happened. I can bring that up for everyone. And so this, you'll be reminded that this is the proposed site plan for that parking.
Okay. And I know that you've been working closely with our attorneys for the town regarding incentive zoning and this whole process, correct?
Correct. And certainly, Peter would jump in. We have reviewed past approvals. The, this is perfectly appropriate. Incentive zoning and parking on adjacent properties was actually contemplated in other previous approvals for the Howitt project. And so this is a, really a logical and, and extension of that previous discussion. And so this is, no issues or concerns with moving forward with this application from a legal perspective.
Okay. And you referenced a previous resolution, so I just want to mention that that was October 7th, 2020?
Correct.
And that was approval of incentive zoning and issuance of a special use permit, and it actually addressed this property.
It addressed a portion of this property, and then now this is for shared parking. This is additional parking above and beyond. But I think it's been a continuation of that conversation, that parking to support K-2 is going to always be needed. The development on the neighboring property at Dr. Howitt's, this is making that even more necessary.
Okay. I'd like to open it up for questions or comments by board members. Anyone like to speak?
For clarity, what were the, the small things that needed to be addressed?
Honestly, most of the comments were things like labeling, references to notes in the, in the plan sets. There were some references that needed to be added, and I think some clarification or calculations for the stormwater management.
Anyone else? Yes?
I had a couple of questions. Following the public hearing that was two weeks ago or whatnot, there were a couple of residents that had said, that had alleged the extension of the parking lot would abut her property directly. It's hard to tell on the site plan, and the Town Board had visited the site as well. And I don't recall the proposed line abutting that closely to a property. Can you clarify where that might be?
I'm sure, I'm happy to do that. So I think you'll see here the proposed boundary line that's being proposed. This area is the remainder of, and continuation of 41 Woodhaven, so it doesn't line up or directly abut the neighboring properties. See how there's that sort of a gap? This is the parcel that's being carved out for the purposes of the, of the parking lot. It does not directly abut any neighboring properties. It's being carved out of 41 Woodhaven.
Okay, the existing. And then, when I had gone down that street, there are some inlets in the asphalt driveway that appears to be private driveways, but I, you know, it's hard to tell without signage. Would it be clear to patrons of K-2 that as they're exiting, let's say, the far, far corners of the parking lot, that, you know, some of this may be private road, and that they're not allowed to do turns, let's say, in those driveways?
Yes. And I think that's something that the, if you travel up what is known as Wilbur Track Road, if you go much further, there starts to be private property and posted signs.
Okay.
So that would be, become abundantly clear. I think from a, from a user standpoint, also the roadway condition changes pretty significantly, and you wouldn't feel like you want to drive unless you were intending to go back there. It starts to feel like you're not supposed to be there.
Anyone else like to comment? Yes, please.
Thank you. Candace, I just wanted to make a comment about your requiring about the woman that approached, that said her property butted up. Both Marie and I were in, in that property on the, it's actually above, her home is above, it looks down. You know, her property probably, line does probably come down, but her home is way above where the parking lot is going to, is going to be. Below on, you know, the parking lot's down on Wilbur Track Road, the home she was referring to, if I'm correct.
It could be. I mean, there were several, I think, that had appeared, and so I just wanted to make sure that there-
That's what she said.
Right.
Yeah, so-
Up there. It is, it's, it probably does abut, but I mean, her, she's way up, quite a bit up higher than the actual parking lot is.
Okay. And just to clarify, 41 Woodhaven abuts the property, the newly carved out parcel that's being proposed would not?
Okay.
Because they've carved out a section that's not quite, doesn't follow the, the edge of the property line of, of 41 Woodhaven. It's sort of an inset piece that's been carved out for the subdivision of land.
Okay. And then I had one other question. As far as the incentive for this property in general, where, when are, when are we to assume, or when are we, are they planning to start the turning lane before this parking lot would be going in?
The, the, the timing of that, we would coordinate that through New York State Department, the New York State Transportation Department. They're going to be the ones who are the permitting agency. The, in projects like this, they can often be done concurrently, but the project wouldn't be finished until the turning lane was complete, because this parking lot, the basis for the department, or Transportation Department was, New York State DOT was indicating that the turning lane was imminent. And so those two things could happen concurrently.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that the turning lane's complete, and that the incentive has been processed properly, and we'll work with the Town Attorney on that part of it.
Please, yes. I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments?
Carrie, just a question on, if, if K-2 was to someday move, what happens with this parcel itself as its approval is, you know, used for this parking? Do they, would the new owner have to come back to us for anything?
That's a great question. So you'll, if, if, if you recall, in the incentive zoning resolution that was adopted back in July, there was a condition that this parcel not be sold separately in perpetuity, as long, without coming back to the Town Board. It couldn't be used for anything else, for any other purpose, unless this Town Board, unless it came back to the Town Board. That was captured very clearly in the, in the resolution for the incentive zoning. And it would be echoed or reiterated in a resolution. If the Town Board wanted to move forward with a resolution to approve this site plan and subdivision, we would capture that again and reference it. This way, there's no separation of approvals. You couldn't look back at one and not know they would both be tied together.
Carrie, is the, the incentive zoning resolution, is that filed anywhere in the clerk's office? Or would the, so I know it's mentioned in the draft that I read today.
Yep. The other thing too is that because of subdivision of land, the actual, the process that the town follows is that the authorizing resolution has to be copied onto one of the Mylar, and so it's memorialized as the part of the subdivision that's filed.
Yeah. I think I would just make sure that it's spelled out clearly in the, in the resolution that approves the subdivision.
Yep.
And then what happens is it gets filed, as she said, on the plans, and it's filed right in the clerk's office so that it's in the chain of title, so that anybody taking, you know, anybody looking to buy it would find it and say, oh, I gotta, you know, I gotta make sure I comply with this.
Good evening. Anyone else like to comment? Okay. I do want to, you know, just reiterate, we had a conversation about incentive zoning in general on June 22nd, and it was approved on July 6th. We actually listed some reasons why we thought this was a good idea to do this, and I would encourage people who have questions to go watch the June 26th work session discussion where we talked about some of the, the reasons for this. Specifically, you know, this is probably the least dense use of space we could think of. This business has exhausted every other option, looked at all different kinds of ways to do something differently. And it is a successful business, and we certainly want to support that. It does diversify the tax base, too. I'm hearing from people that you generally are supporting moving forward?
There's not any reason not to if we supported the first resolution, because the first resolution really is the story. The second resolution is just something that you have to do to conform along the lines of subdividing the property in order to do the parking lot. So I certainly support, I think in the resolution, we should, you could almost mimic so much of the first resolution and just add those things that you mentioned that were added about the, the storm drain and the, what else was there? Just those labeling and this and that, and otherwise, it's really-
We generally have a blanket statement that indicates that the final plans have to be reviewed and approved by the town engineer, and they've got to address all PRC comments. So the town wouldn't allow or sign off on a subdivision until that happened. So even if they decided after the fact they didn't want to follow X, Y, or Z of the engineer's comments, that's not even something that can happen in any review. It's a requirement before plans can be filed.
Okay. I'm assuming you're looking for a resolution to approve the subdivision on site plan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for that.
I would move that we approve this resolution based on the fact that we have already supported the first resolution, and this is a continuation of the same discussion. And I'm sure you can write it better when you put the resolution together.
I will certainly put a resolution together for this board to review and act on.
And I'll second that.
Well said, Councilperson Cole, and a second by Councilperson Ockenden. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Action Item C, 1506 Empire Zoning Application Follow-Up.
So you recall that we had, the public hearing was conducted last month. This is now the follow-up conversation to indicate whether or not the board is comfortable moving forward with the rezoning of 1506 Empire Boulevard. That would be rezoning it from residential R112 to limited business. As a recap, this was an item that was reviewed by the Comprehensive Plan Committee and was supported for the change being located along Empire Boulevard. Limited business seemed like the better opportunity and more appropriate zoning and land use designation for this particular location.
Okay. I know this was a fairly straightforward piece, action item, but I do want to mention, I know there was someone who was concerned about, you know, being behind them. To me, a lot of those questions can be addressed with any future application before the board regarding a site plan. And that's about mitigation of, you know, burm-ing things like that.
Right. So during this, during a future site plan, if, if development were to move, come forward under the new zoning district, there'd be buffering requirements that are required in that district. There's landscaping, there's lighting that gets looked at. Then the Planning Board is very diligent, and that's the body that would be reviewing future pending development applications, very diligent in making sure that, you know, the best possible development that balances the needs of the developer, but also from the neighboring properties would be advanced.
Correct. Any questions for Ms. Ivors?
I was just thinking, is there a way to put that in the resolution, you know? Mention the fact that we did have a resident, residents come in to speak to this. They're concerned there is neighboring properties behind this land, and that any futures, any future development must take into account. You know, just put it in there, something to reflect that we did hear it, and, and it's not something that's gone unnoticed.
Yeah. So I think that for the purposes of the resolution, I think we'll certainly would address the fact that future development would need to go through its own development review process and, and meet the requirements of the, of the zoning. And I think the zoning itself, the zoning district regulations, they provide that level of guidance on their own, because there are certain performance measures and thresholds that need to be met as part of that, that zoning classification. So I don't think, I think by virtue of referencing the new zoning district, you're also referencing those requirements.
Okay. Anyone else?
Carrie, for the business that was there previously, I think the Hilltop Grocer was there also. Was it still zoned as the R1?
So it was a, it was owned R112. That was a farm stand, which was under the code at the time when it was developed, was allowed to be there. By today's standards, it wouldn't meet the minimum acreage requirement by current code requirements, but it was allowed at the time because it was an agricultural operation, a farm stand, if you will, and those can be allowed, I believe now they require, it's a, I believe it's a conditional use under R112. I would have to check the code to be sure, but it's certainly a potential use, and it would have been allowed at the time, but it wouldn't be able to, it's now considered pre-existing non-conforming because it doesn't meet the minimum size requirements.
And when you say at the time, how, approximately how long?
Ooh, I might be looking to somebody on the board to tell me that.
Have they been close since the 70s or 80s?
Yes, I think it, yeah.
1972.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember as a child, you know, as a little girl.
So for clarity, for the record, we have a member of the public who noted that it was for 50 years, 1972.
And I'm happy that I can, I can pull up Monroe County's records and check the date of the building.
Excuse me, that's okay. We're, Carrie's looking it up. We're, we're set. Thank you very much.
Bear with me. Monroe County changed its, where it provides information for year of construction.
It's okay. So while Carrie's looking that up, I did drive by the property, because I did want to see, Bob had mentioned the, the incline, and I didn't recall that from, from the layout of the business, but at least for the longest I can remember, it's been a defunct property, right? And it's been marketed as industrial, but I didn't go to the lengths of looking up what code of industry. But I had gone to at least see, you know, the concern of, of the residents, and I do understand at least the tree line, but it's not, there is a slight incline, but not so far to where I think that would be, there would be a natural divide if there were flowover from the business. So I do at least recognize the, the residents' concerns, and it did really seem to impact maybe one or two, I think, just from the line of sight. So, but, you know, I guess it's helpful to know that it's been non-conforming for some time, and whatever it becomes, it would be part of the discussion.
Yeah. And the year of construction, according to Monroe County Real Property, is 1957. So 65 years.
Close.
Are there any other comments or questions for Carrie?
Actually, this is a work session. It's specifically for the board members to talk amongst themselves. Is there something you specifically need to say? Well, if you want to hear it.
Well, I think we don't have any additional questions that would require you to be here. Is there anything that the board would like to ask the applicant?
Well, I guess I want to confirm, this is the applicant?
This is the applicant, yes.
Yes.
Forgive me, yeah. It's, it is the applicant, yes.
Okay.
Sorry. When I, when I heard the talking in the background, I wasn't sure who was speaking from the audience. So, yeah, it is. Thank you.
Carrie, may I ask one question to you? Maybe, and maybe I would have to have the applicant ask that, answer that, but proposed, there's no proposed use application that-
At this time, the town isn't aware of any proposed development or use. The change in zoning was really intended to allow for the property owner to have more development opportunity.
So it's just, yeah.
Right. Because right now, there's no, no potential, no one's coming in to build R112 housing.
And just to reiterate again, the Com, Committee, Complan Committee is aware?
They are aware. They actually toured the site-
Okay.
-with staff. This is going back, predates me, but they did, members of the committee did tour the site with, with members of town staff.
Fine. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Sorry, one other thing, Carrie's then. I too, as Candace did, drove by that site, and I agree too, that, that for the, for the most part, I thought that, that it sits mostly in a, in which what I would be, think would be considered more of a business, a good use of business, though, as far as changing that to, to R1, to change the code, the code there. I think that's something that would benefit the, the area as well. So, but I would be, would want to make sure that we do our cognizance of the neighbors on the surrounding, but I think that-
And certainly, the neighbors would have an opportunity, if any future development going to the Planning Board, they'd be subject to public hearing. They'd be notified, you know, residents within a certain distance would be notified. So there would be an opportunity to make sure their voice was heard, and recommendations or, you know, requests for site elements or, or design be heard at that time.
So I, I did want to be clear, make sure that I wasn't confusing something. So the application at least had a proposed global use of retail stores, restaurant, and things of that nature.
Things that are in keeping with the limited business-
Okay.
-that are permitted under the limited business.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Carrie, or any other questions in general?
No.
Okay. Am I hearing then that you are supporting this application to move forward and be approved?
We are.
Okay. Would somebody like a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and rezone 1506, from, to Empire Zoning Application from R112 to limited business.
Limited business.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to prepare that resolution. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Candace, second.
Candace beat you to it, too. Okay, I have a resolution for, I have a motion from Councilperson Draw and a second from Councilperson Lee to move forward preparing a resolution to approve the change in zoning for 1506 Empire, Empire zoning, I'm sorry, 1506 Empire Boulevard from R112 to limited business. May I have a roll call vote?
I'm sorry. Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so for the applicant in the audience, just to let you know, this will actually come before the board at a future meeting for a resolution to approve the request. Okay? You're very welcome. Moving on to Action Item D, a local law cannabis retail dispensary follow-up.
Okay, as noted, the cannabis retail dispensary local law was presented to this board last month, perhaps a month before that, as a draft local law. A public hearing was conducted. And then subsequent follow-up, members of the Town Board identify some potential tweaks or changes. Following the, the regulations or the town law requirements, we've prepared a revised draft local law for your consideration. I did provide it, it has been posted also on the town's website as a updated or revised version, so that the original and the changed appear and are available for public review. New York State Town Law requires that you have the final form, final version of the local law in your possession for a period of time. So if you're comfortable, and certainly we can talk about the changes that were made, we, and I'm happy to go through those, we would actually be looking for a resolution to be added to a future legislative meeting that meets that minimum day, 10, seven or 10-day requirement. And I'll work with the Town Attorney to make sure. But either way, we wouldn't be looking at doing it next week because that would not be enough time.
Okay. I think it would be really helpful if you could summarize the changes, because some of this was based on feedback from the board members.
It was.
So I want to make sure that they realize it's been captured in the draft.
Okay. So the, the, the first thing that I guess we'll talk about then is the, the fact that we removed one of the districts from the available locations for conditional use. It now is, it's limited industrial and general business are the two zoning districts where this potential use could be granted approval as a conditional use. The second thing that we changed is the- The second thing that we changed is the, some of the language around the minimum distance required. We were, we clarified some of the language about the uses where the separation was needed. We also moved the, the distance measurement methodology from one of the specific items up to the very top, so it was very clear that it applied to all of the separate, the minimum distance sort of thresholds that are required. One change to note, and I think I mentioned this in the summary of changes, is that the prior approach to measuring between parcel line or boundary line or parcel line to the parcel of the proposed location proved, after doing a mapping analysis, that too few parcels would have been available for potential development, almost to the point of being, putting us at risk for being in violation of the state law. Because the state has been very clear that you can't zone it out. You can't put it in your zoning code in such a way that you're essentially not allowing it to be developed. And when we did an analysis of the, using the parcel boundary, many plazas are very large and have multiple buildings, but the whole parcel was taken out because a line was near it. Meanwhile, a building could be 1,000 feet away, but still not eligible. And so for that reason, in consultation with the town attorney, we modified that definition so that it's from the bound, the property line of the protected use or the line of the zoning, the residential district zoning line, to the building footprint of the proposed location or the tenant space footprint of the proposed location. Just to make sure that the town doesn't find itself inadvertently violating the spirit and direction of the state law. And certainly, I would defer to our town attorney to chime in or answer any questions as it relates to them.
Yep, that's right. Couldn't have said it better.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Weiser?
No, did we make any other?
No, we changed nothing about the distance. Oh, and then the other change that we made is hours of operation.
Hours, yes.
Was also noted, so we did reduce that per the conversation and the recommendation of the town board.
We go with the liquor on Sundays, is that the conversation?
Yeah, we changed it in the, and forgive me, I'll bring up the draft really quickly.
Monday, Monday through Saturday, the end time was revised from 9:00 PM to 8:00 PM and on Sundays, closing time of 6:00 PM was updated to 5:00 PM.
Okay. I'm just curious, I did not receive any feedback after our public hearing about this. Has anyone else received anything that we should enter into the public record, into the project file?
I know council had reached out to me before and I haven't heard any more from them on the proposed applicant that was looking to come in.
I just want to make sure we added to the project file if there was anything.
We did, if you, if I may, we did also look at the penalty provision for violations. We were exploring whether or not we could do something different and we believe we're constrained by, because this is really part of the zoning code, by what town law 268 and those penalties already provide, so therefore, we basically incorporate, you know, we refer back to that section for penalties, you know, for violations.
So it's consistent with the rest of the code?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any questions additionally?
A couple of things for discussion. Under section D, it's the header is changes in operator or site, but because of the revisions that we added to the paragraph, the header doesn't quite line up with the content, which it's a very minor request, but if we want to take a second look at that.
Yeah, so changes in operator or site, the, the language says two things, it's either if the owner or the operator changes and that's the only change that's happening that can be reviewed administratively. The other piece is that if the site itself, that an approved existing site that's already been granted, the conditional use, has some minor change, they want to, you know, add a portico or they want to do.
Yeah, no, I don't have an issue at all with the revisions to the paragraph, it's the.
Indentation.
You're talking about the formatting, right?
It's the formatting, but, but it's no, it's a minor.
Correct, forgive me, I'm sorry, I was, oh, no, 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 I appreciate that, I'm, we can certainly fix that.
One thing that I did want to at least have some discussion on was, we had taken into great lengths to consider the challenges raised by the applicant as to what does it mean where large children congregate and the board's discussion made it clear that we believe that the spirit and intent of the law would include childcare facilities and where children are going to be under supervision, right? And so here, I see the proposed edit for a public playground or childcare facility. I don't see that facility is defined anywhere and I don't know if the surrounding businesses, if there were to be an independent childcare operator, not necessarily facility, right? But if it were in-home daycare or a retail, one tenant space in a retail store.
Business, business instead of facility.
I guess I'd like to hear from the town attorney as to whether or not you foresee challenges as to the, to the word facility because it's not a capitalized term.
I'm checking our code. I believe we, we use that phrase to align with the terminology that exists in our defined terms.
Okay.
So I want to just, I'm double checking that to make sure that I'm not making.
Facility wouldn't be, wouldn't, I don't believe facility would include, you know, the home daycare situation that you described.
So I guess I'll ask the board, what would you, would you consider that being worth protecting as part of this preclusion?
May I point, though, that because of the residential zoning district requirement to be 500 feet, well, I see what you're saying, there's a bit of a difference in space there. There would certainly be a separation by the residential zoning districts are automatically a 500-foot buffer, to the extent that a childcare facility could be located right on the edge, potentially, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm curious what the, what our town code is, if it has a definition of facility and what that is.
I'm looking that up as we speak.
I haven't memorized the code book yet, sorry.
I'm trying.
I don't think you'll ever memorize it. I've been looking at it for 15 years and many parts that are still yet to be explored. The, there is a provision in here, though, about, it gives a little bit of flexibility by including some language that says, you know, or talks about the childcare facility or similar uses as determined by the code enforcement officials, so.
So that was going to be my, my second point, the or similar uses, I think is that catch-all phrase that would grant flexibility, but it being the discretion of the code enforcement officer, is the code enforcement officer the office or a single person?
So it is a title and I believe there is somebody in, I don't know if we've, that is defined in the code, like in Article 94, and I believe it is, I mean, as a person empowered with interpreting the code, I believe it's, is it defined, it's probably Andy, it's probably the person.
It is Andy at this point.
Yeah.
Didn't want to interrupt you, but it is Andy.
Yeah.
So there is a specific code enforcement officer that interprets the book.
Right. And then if, so a situation where, let's say, the code enforcement official renders an interpretation that something is not a similar use, then typically, the way that would work is that would get, that determination would be, it would go to the prospective applicant, it would get filed in the clerk's office or in the building department, I'm not sure where we file them. And then they have 60 days to appeal to the zoning board, so if they didn't like that interpretation, they have a right to appeal to the zoning board and to make their case that, well, that's not the right interpretation, it should be, you know, something different than the zoning board would have an opportunity to weigh in. And then obviously, then they'd have Article 78 if they didn't like that decision.
Is there any room to have the discretion of the board as part of that appellate process?
Which board?
Like the zoning board?
The town board?
I'm a little uncomfortable with, I mean, there is a process in place for any appeal with the code enforcement, so I don't, why would we change it? Just help, help me understand that.
So we're adding a layer of review here that previously wasn't in the draft by adding as determined by the code enforcement officer? And so if, so I'm thinking, I know there's an appellate process.
Let somebody apply for a conditional use permit and enable them to make that argument that it is, you know, to the, to the board having jurisdiction that it's a similar to one of those other uses, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I guess I would want some balance to the code enforcement officer, right? Because it's, if it's determined by one person, the interpretation of, so say, say that there could be two similarly situated businesses making the application and if you have variances in how it might be interpreted, then what's going to be the body? If it's going, if it's being kicked back to the zoning board prior to an appeal, then I think there's at least some type, some type of check and balance. Or if it's being checked again by the board, some other layer, since we're adding a layer already to code enforcement officer, is there going to be another balance to that code enforcement officer is essentially what I'm looking before we get to an Article 78? Because that already puts us in a very defensive posture.
I think my, I'm going to jump in if you don't mind. So the code has a definition under 250-13.10 for the conditional use for childcare facilities and it says childcare shall be defined as that caring related to children between ages of six weeks and 12 years of age.
Okay.
And then it goes on to describe requirements for childcare facilities in residential zoning districts, childcare facilities in residential, they have, there's a myriad of regulations and performance requirements. So the code enforcement officer, whoever that position is, would have that definition to go back to and to be able to justify. There would be a, I think there'd be two steps that would happen before an Article 78 could even be coming into the picture. There would be the interpretation itself and then if they didn't like the interpretation, they could actually go to the zoning board of appeals to appeal the interpretation of the, of local official. If they didn't like that answer, now they've already tried with two different steps, if they get that far, then it would be, there's no way to avoid, if they still don't like the answer, would be an Article 78. It wouldn't really matter if it was a town board versus code enforcement officer, those two steps would still be available. Does that make sense?
Yep, I would just take more comfort in having a body reviewing versus.
The zoning board.
A single person.
Yeah, and generally speaking, I think from a practice standpoint, often, even though it might be one officer, they often confer with, and I can speak on a daily basis, will confer with multiple staff members to see if everybody's reading and interpreting the code the same way, so that there's some consistency across the board. So even though there's one person named as a code enforcement officer, it's often a collective review effort before it even gets to an interpretation.
Including council.
Including council, correct. Yeah, we don't make a move without checking with Pete first.
But then, the appellate process being going to the zoning board, which is, it's basically a legislative body, I mean, it can act.
And they're appointed to serve an appellate function, so that's really their, their primary function is to serve an appellate, to say, okay, this is the way the code's written.
I would feel more comfortable with the zoning board making that interpretation than I would the town board making that interpretation. I understand where you're coming from, but the zoning board has more specific training in that area and is often actually asked to interpret something.
Yes.
Right.
I agree.
Additional thoughts?
There's a lettering issue in that same paragraph.
Okay, we'll correct that as well.
It's from the automatic numbering in Word.
Okay, thank you, I will be sure to fix that. So if, if we're comfortable with the changes as they've been made, what would, what would happen next is a clean copy of what you're looking at would be prepared to accompany a future resolution adopting the local law. So we'll make sure that we, any, like any minor typos, formatting issues, we'll certainly correct those. Those typically don't rise to the level of being an issue for the local law being in its final form. Typically, that's substantive issues, you couldn't make a substantive change, substantive change without having it available for that 10-day period again.
Okay, I just do want to make sure that all the board members are comfortable with that or that, I know, you know, Candace, I think we tried to address it, I wanted to hear from the other board members if they were comfortable with the way that, that E section 1B is worded.
Actually, I have a question that may not exactly pertain to that, so if you want to, I'll wait to see if there's any question on that.
I am fine with that, is the code enfor, in fact, I like that as determined by the code enforcement officer and I do believe that the zoning board would be the.
The appropriate body.
Be the appropriate for the.
For the conditional use to begin with.
Yeah. I too had another question, but when you're off of that, this area too.
And Linda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and Candace, we've tried to address best we can?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, questions, more questions. Councilperson Ockenden.
So can I, maybe, so you're, if, I want to try to alleviate your concern on that, how that might play out, if I could, just, so when somebody is going to be applying for a conditional use permit, they might come in, if they could come in with an appeal and their permit application, and if it's, if it requires an appeal, the whole thing would get heard by the zoning board, so that, so, you know, it would all kind of be handled all at the same time anyways? So I was just kind of looking at that and, I don't know, hopefully that alleviates that concern.
I think just hearing the multiple checks or processes of the appeal satisfies my concern. I didn't want to hinge on a person and that's kind of why I asked, is it the office of town enforcement or a single appointed person? And I understand collaborative work all the time, but that's not what it says.
Right.
So, okay, so I'm fine, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
Carrie, just if we could, I'm going to go backwards here for a minute.
Sure.
In your notes for tonight, you referenced where the change in how the distance would be measured. Can we just go through that again? I just want, so, I guess the way I see it is, we determined that we couldn't remove limited business because it was too restrictive, right?
Well, we did, no, we did remove limited business.
We couldn't remove general business.
General business.
We couldn't remove everything.
Couldn't, couldn't remove general business because light industrial doesn't have, there's limited parcels available to begin with and then those that are there, the zone, the distance requirements, we would be down to either zero parcels or maybe one, potentially. So we'd be essentially creating no viable development space within the town. Within general business, we did the analysis, now if you think about general business and I'll just maybe point to the area of like the Baytown, Bay and Empire area, that's our largest contingent of general business. Many, many parcels are located and are zoned for general business, but only under the requirements measuring to lot lines, only four would be available for development there, only four parcels out of the many, many, many. And so the problem with that is, we were concerned that that would expose the town to being called out by New York State and potentially challenged and we do not want to put ourselves in the position of becoming the poster child of do not zone it out after the fact, was what the concern was. And felt like the, so the way to address that would be to, we, if a subject location, say, you know, property owner is looking at, you know, property owner, you're going to draw the lines from the residential zoning district boundary and then you're going to draw the 1,000 feet from those other potentially uses that are protected. And so instead of drawing to the parcel line of where they're looking to go, because if you look at a plaza, plaza parcel boundary is huge and can go right up against residential development, so by virtue of that, you've just zoned out anything that's even close to a resident, even if the, even if the plaza has 4,000 feet of parking before you get to a building.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? So that's the challenge. So that's why having a go to the building footprint of the, of an enclosed, like of a standalone building or to the footprint of the tenant space, honestly, is more of the protection anyway, because now you're allowing for plazas not to be zoned out and, you know, we don't want to find ourselves on, when we talk about Article 78s, we don't want to find ourselves on the receiving end of one of those.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Debbie?
No, I guess you did answer my question. My only question was, and I know there's probably, there's no way to get around a general business district with stipulations, you can't.
That's what the conditional use permitting process is for, is. That's what the conditional use permitting process is for is setting those parameters of distances, hours of operation. And I think from the state's perspective, at some point, maybe not right now, but I think the state is, from my, based on the, the laws that they have in place, they're really treating cannabis retail the same way they treat liquor stores.
Yeah, understood.
So I think there, there's a parallel there. I think because it's so new, we, we feel like we're, you know, in the days of prohibition, we're like the first, you know, so it's, it's a, it's a, it's a new enterprise, a new type of development, new type of use. And so it's understandable to have trepidation. I, we just want to make sure that we're not putting, exposing the town to unnecessary risk.
So Carrie, if we were, I mean, I'm not saying, because I know you just said us all. If we were to take general business district out and just go with a light industrial district and say, this is what we're doing in this town. If we were to do that, do we, I mean, is it, is it legal for us to do something like that, to, to do that?
So I, there's a question between legal and advisable. Might it be legal? Maybe.
Until you're reversed.
You wouldn't know until a court decides.
Or, or the secretary, secretary of state doesn't sign off on the law. Because that's the other thing is these laws are relatively new. The local laws that are being adopted, the state cannabis control board has issued guidance on what you can and cannot do. And it's been very clear. And so I think we wouldn't want, again, not, we don't want to test the water and become the poster child for the state to say, don't do what Penfield did. They tried to zone it out.
Or, I mean, maybe you do, but you know.
Yes. Yeah. I guess, yeah, that's a better way of.
But that's, you know, that's the risk is it depends on how many parcels you have that are really viable when you factor in the distance markers. And if, if you've already said you're going to allow it, and then you, you zone it in such a way that you don't allow it now. That's where the, that's where you're getting into trouble.
I understand. I just was, wanted to hear.
So as a follow-up, you know, you've looked at the GIS maps more than I have. How many parcels are under light industrial? I mean, there's so few areas in Penfield. I think that's, that's what concerns me.
Yes. Right. Yeah. So I mean, I can take another, I'm happy to take a closer look at that and give you sort of the analysis of like how many parcels are available in that district versus how many are currently occupied. And then the other issue we have, I know in some places the distances become, because they, they, they're adjacent to residential, it very quickly becomes, we have zero. I know in one of the industrial areas, there were zero lots available.
Right. And we only have, I think, two or three light industrial areas to begin with.
Two.
Two. So if you zoned one out already.
I know.
To me, that's, it's almost not worth it, like.
Right. I just, and then the, there's a, you know, obviously the, yeah, I think the, I'm, my perspective is always to protect the town and try to minimize risk or exposure to risk.
And the town appreciates it.
Yeah.
Is that something though, like some of these things that we've acted upon, we can't change, right? We've kind of bought in. Is this one of those or once we establish these zones, can they be changed or is that?
Yeah. So we could, a future, like, so for example, in a future, say at some point in the future, the town decides it's going to change, you know, its map at some point in the future of what districts are located where. At that would be the time where the, this conditional use where it's allowed could also change. So by virtue of a future local law, you know, say, for example, light industrial expanded to other places, right? And now we've got more parcels that are potentially available or viable in places that make sense and the town feels comfortable. Then you could certainly revisit this by local law to change the, the designations of where this conditional use permit is permitted.
You just have to go through the local law process again.
Yeah.
But.
But they're grandfathered in.
That's right. So if you've got somebody that's in there, you know, right in the prime spot, then, you know, now they're pre-existing non-conforming.
Right.
I still would like to see unlimited business, and maybe I'm, maybe the board doesn't feel this way. But I would like to see what kind, what opportu, what, what, how much we have, how many parcels we have in that limited.
I'm happy to share an analysis for, to concede the number of parcels for light industrial and what would be eligible with the distance requirements.
I think you had shown us a map previously. I just, I couldn't find it quickly enough, but if you can just re-circulate.
And that was a really early one, so I would be reluctant to share that one with you. I'd be, I feel better about providing you with a more current version.
All right. So what I'm hearing is I think we should table this till the next work session. So that we can give Deb, councilperson Draw, her, the information. I would actually like to see it too. I think, I think that's really important that we get it right.
Okay.
And we're okay to take our time with it, I think.
Sure.
Okay.
To my knowledge, I'm not aware of any upcoming licenses. I know for dispensaries, the state in, in terms of before issuing a license is going to be reaching out to the host communities. To my, I don't know who at the host community they would reach out to. I don't know if they would, I'm not sure how they're working that. I'm happy to also make a call to the cannabis management board to find out if there's any pending applications.
Is there anybody there?
There are people there. I have gotten calls. They certainly have email. I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus on television, but it might take me a minute to get an answer.
I, I think that's wise to do that because my concern, because you don't want to end up missing the boat on that. Because I'm, my concern is that, you know, you've got these CBD retailers that I'm sure they're thinking, well, I'm just going to make the transition. And they're all over and they're in places where we don't want the dispensaries to be. And in fact, I saw, I was amazed. I saw a sign, you know, coming from my office on the expressway about something that said, you know, CBD and THC. And I'm like, well, you know, where, where's that happening, you know? But that's, so that just leads me to think that that's what they're looking to do. So we want to make sure we were first before that.
The other advantage to having this regulation on the books currently is so that it's very clear that in order for there to be seller distribution of THC-based products, cannabis products, you have to be licensed because you have to have a conditional use permit through the, conditional use permit issued by the town. And then that's predicated on you having a New York state dispensary license. So that anybody who's operating illegally out of another type of a store, there's, provides some actionable item at the local level. Right now, the town really can't enforce. If a, if a business is selling this, these products illegally, we don't have any way to do anything. So there's another benefit to this local law. In addition, in addition to regulating legally licensed businesses that might be coming in through the state, it also gives us a way to, a resource to try to navigate enforcement for operations that are not.
Sure. No, I, I agree. I just want to make sure that you, then the attorney, the attorney here are comfortable tabling it. We're okay.
Is it possible, so is it possible because this has been out in the public, is it possible to continue the conversation? Again, legally for New York state town law, the town board has to be in receipt of the final version 10 days prior to adoption, or maybe seven, if we check.
Yeah. I thought it was seven excluding Sunday, but.
I, and I, yeah.
It, but it's no, it's would be no more than 10.
Right. And so it's possible we could via potentially email communicate this information to you? Or would you rather do it in a work session?
Frankly, for the issue of transparency, I would like to do it in work session.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying. I know that the state is moving along and things are moving along. I get it. But I do want to get it right.
Okay.
So is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Could I have a motion to table it?
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by councilperson Draw and a second by councilperson Lee to table the cannabis retail dispensary follow-up till the 28th of September. Okay? Anna roll call vote, please.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you very much. Moving on, you can't leave yet. You're still on the hot seat, Ms. Ivers.
I'm not going anywhere. You got me for the whole night.
Administrative review of proposed patio renovation and siding replacement at 1129 Empire Boulevard. And I believe there is an applicant here to show us samples, correct? So we do want to have you come on up.
So the, as you recall, the special use permit was already issued to 1129 Empire Boulevard. That is to welcome in the bar bill. They are replacing, they are going to be the, operating their restaurant out of the former McGregor's. So that's already been approved. The applicant had indicated their interest in refreshing the outdoor patio space, keeping it essentially the same size. They were modifying, they were round, there's a rounded corner that they were going to be squaring off. And they were going to be making some exterior modifications to the entryway that leads, connects the patio space to the building itself. I didn't believe it meant, met the requirements of, there's no need for a public hearing. They're not changing the scale of the building. They're not adding additional space. They're just doing a refresh. In addition to that, applicant indicated that they wanted to, they were exploring the possibility of re-siding the building. They were looking at either painting it or siding it. And they were waiting on cost estimates to determine which path they might take. The applicants indicated that they are looking to use a, it's not a hardy board. It's not a, it's a cement, no, it's not a cement board. It's something else. The applicant will have that better answer.
Could you just introduce yourself?
Hello. My name is John Crook. I'm one of the owners of the bar bill.
Okay.
Basically what the product is, is kind of a higher end vinyl. So if you have like your traditional house vinyl, it's empty on the back, sorry. This kind of has like an insulation on the back, just kind of making it, you know, more energy efficient. And then it's a wider board, which we like because it kind of mimics a more historic look, bit wide board wood. So yeah, we kind of, our original plan was to just clean the vinyl, the white, keep it the same. And then when we got a quote, when we took a closer look, there was a lot of damage to it. And so we got a quote to repair the damaged white vinyl. And it ended up being like eight or nine grand, which if we just redid the whole thing, it would be like 15 or 16. So then we started looking at new products and we thought this was nice because it was kind of an upgrade. We liked the look.
You got this, it would be cited for $15,000?
Yes.
That's a good deal. Sign me up.
Really great contract.
So I know that, I asked the applicant to bring a sample for the color as well. Because sometimes the variation between computer screens, printed material, the color that you're looking at on the screen might not match the color that they're proposing.
No, we appreciate it. Thank you.
It's this fired brick, I believe it's called. It's kind of a muted maroon.
Okay.
What old is that building?
I will.
Eighteen fifty.
It's in definitely the 1800s. It's not a local, it's not a designated.
It's not designated.
That was my next question.
It's not designated historic site.
I think it's 1890.
1890, wow. So the historic board would have to take a look at this?
No.
No, it's not.
It's not a designated property.
Designated, okay.
Although I do think that color is in keeping with the historic nature of the building, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. What, what other samples did you have to show us?
That's, that's it for the siding. And then the patio changes are all on blueprints.
And I'll be happy to pull that up.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll show you the schematic drawing. This is going to show sort of the finished look of the building with that maroon, sort of fire.
Fire brick red.
Fire brick red. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Clearly my, I don't have a future at Sherwin-Williams or anything like it. Bear with me for a moment. I'll pull up the.
I'm just curious, was it just easier to keep clean than the white?
No, no, we, we weren't totally against the white. We just, red is kind of our branding. We have another restaurant that's red, so we figured.
Fair enough.
Why not keep it consistent?
Okay.
Looks nicer.
I think it's nice.
Thank you.
So.
If you go to D1, it shows the existing patio. I don't know if you.
Okay. Bear with me. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. I think it's the last, yep, there it is.
There's the existing.
So basically it's pavers, which is fundamentally just brick on sand. And then it has a gas fireplace in the middle. And then they would do seating around that fireplace. Basically what we wanted to change was move the fireplaces to the front. So you kind of can have patrons looking at the bay, which we thought was really nice. And then the seating would be in the back. And then what we're proposing is to add a little bit of a overhang on that right side, a little roof. So you can protect people from the rain. And then there's going to be kind of a lattice that comes out, if you can see, yeah, right there. And then the final piece is to put in those sliding glass doors. So during the summer, you can make it kind of an indoor, outdoor use.
And this is not changing the footprint?
Not changing the footprint. So this is an existing space right now. What the, they'll obviously be needing to go to the, the building department for building permits because they are changing what are now windows into doors. But because the, it's not adding in addition, it's just simply changing the facade. Certainly if it was minor, you know, changing of windows and nothing was, there were in-kind replacements, they wouldn't even be coming to the board. They would just be going to get a building permit.
Right.
But because there was some change in fenestration, meaning changes in like openings, I felt that the board needed to review it and, and provide their blessing before they proceeded to the building department.
Okay. Any questions?
No. Looks nice.
Thank you.
I think, you know, and I, we don't really need to make a motion. We just need to say, great. And it looks good.
Thank you so much.
And we're looking forward to seeing the fire brick red.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming.
What was your schedule for your plans when you hoped to be?
We're hoping to be open May 1st, 2023. Every single date we've done on our past four projects, we've been late. So it'll probably be June, July, but yeah, May 1 is our, is our goal.
Target.
Yeah. So we'll see.
Now he said on TV and I'll be.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be in the news tomorrow.
I'll be the one supporting people when he's late on arrival. That's fine. You won't get the phone calls. I will. Where are they?
Thank you again.
Thank you for your time this evening. All right. Moving on to action item F, sewer district extension. I know Mr. Valentine is not here this evening and you are going to be.
I am playing the part of Mr. Valentine, so I'm happy to volunteer him for anything that, no, I'm not going to do that. Bear with me for a minute. So this is a request to set a public hearing for an extension of a sewer district needed to serve the arbors, which is an approved development in the mixed use development district. So really the ask here is we need to extend the sewer district. By we, I mean the engineering department or the, and planning and engineering. So Mr. Valentine asked if you would be so kind as to allow a preparation of a resolution to set a future public hearing date for this matter. And he'll work with a supervisor to pick the date that makes the most sense as far as the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Ivers?
No.
All right. I will take a motion to set a public hearing.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion by councilperson Lee and a second by councilperson Cole. If there are no other comments or questions, we can go to a roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our action items for the evening. We'll move on to two informational items, again with Ms. Ivers.
So the first one is I wanted to share with you the fact that staff has been looking at our existing fence regulations in section 250 dash 7.1. Over the last, for at least the time that I've been here, we've seen an increased number of hold harmless agreements that have come in after the fact of fencing being installed. And we realize that right now, the way our code reads, there's really no indication or requirements that you don't build. I mean, generally speaking, you're not supposed to build it. You can't build an easement. But the fence regulations don't expressly state that. So we thought that there's an opportunity to update the code to include that. And while we're doing that, there, over time, staff has encountered either gray areas or interpretation challenges because terminology wasn't clear or sort of the intent of what should go where. And the wording could have been more clear for people to understand what they're allowed to build. And so we thought we would take this opportunity to make that update. I never want to present a local law to the town board without you hearing about it in an informational session first. So I just wanted to give you that heads up that we are, staff has been internally working to update that section of the code to clarify definitions and to clarify what types of fencing are allowed for what uses. So that's very clear and there's no, I shouldn't say no, that's a, in zoning, there's no such thing as no confusion. But there's a lot less confusion about what can go where. We are going to be providing that to the town attorney for his review. So by the time it is presented as an action item, it will have been vetted by everybody who needs to see it.
Any questions for Carrie?
No, I think it's a great idea, especially the, the people that put the fences up. We want them to understand because honestly, I hear, you know, I don't know about you, when you walk through the neighborhoods, I get those kind of. walk through the neighborhoods, I get those kind of questions. And it's like, you know, and they'll say, well, the fence guy says I don't have to do this or something. And it's like, you know, and I'm always like, call the town, talk, and talk to somebody up in the building department, if you have any questions. And sometimes the resident and their contractor are not on the same page, you know. The more clear we can be on this level for both.
Right.
The less confusion there will be.
And for this, it's nice to be able to send, the building department can just send a direct link to this section of the code. And then if there's any questions or clarifications, and this is easily searched online, if anyone types in, you know, Penfield zoning code, Ecode 360 will pop up, and you'll be able to have a quick access. And Ecode 360, for any other, you know, code geeks out there, has a very high functioning search ability. And so any keyword search, you can go through and find it. Any section, any section in the code that has that term will show up. So it's really a very robust tool.
Excellent.
So I'm curious, one of the things that I've noticed since being here is that, I think that, I'm wondering what the mechanism might be for reviewing the code in a regular routine manner. So for example, on the school board, they have a huge, you know, set of regulations and code, their own code. And there is a group of people that actually reads about one-fifth of that every year, so that every five years, something's being looked at. And it's really to keep current. Are there any towns that have anything like that in place, or, you know, is that something we would want to consider? Because I think it's very difficult to do the one in here and there.
So we've talked about this a lot, actually, at a staff level. So I'm keeping currently, as little issues pop up or big issues pop up, I have currently a running list of Excel, an Excel spreadsheet of code sections or either changes, additions, or things that might need to be looked at at some point. And that, that list is growing with every moment that I'm here. And it's normal. I think, I'm not familiar, I think it would be a great idea to have that type of sort of schedule of review. The challenge, and as we'll note, is town codes are very large. The zoning code is, by itself, is pretty hefty. And often, what happens is, when you're changing something in one section, you're actually, whether you realize it or not, potentially impacting other sections. So it becomes, I think it's a great idea, and we should certainly, that should be the goal, is to do that sort of periodic review and do it in a way that's methodical.
Yeah.
I think also, maybe there's an opportunity to prioritize what issues or concerns.
Okay.
We did that, though. I mean, weren't you a part of that, Pete? The general code? Jim Costello?
They did that probably 10 years ago. They revised the zoning code. But I think that there are still things that, that as we go through things, as the, you know, as new developments happen, like even like mixed use, that's something that we did that, and now it's like, oh, we could make some changes here.
Yeah.
The whole, the zoning code, I think, I mean, I've got, I've got a chunk of it with some post-it notes throughout that I'm thinking should be changed. And I know that Andy and Carrie and the building and planning departments are always thinking about things like that. So if I were going to focus on any part of the code, I think I'd focus on the zoning.
Yeah.
It's the general code. We went through it all. We had to go, we had meetings. We had meetings in the supervisors' room, where the, Costello pretty much led it. But we have up on the screen, and we go, this is the things that are in here now. We need to change them because. And we went, and it went on for weeks and weeks to update it, so we all understood as well. So it's sort of what you're talking about. But we did it all at once to get, you know, trying to get it all to be clear. And obviously, you know, 10 years ago, many things have changed, so.
It's quite a project to do.
Yeah.
It's, I, I mean, I can't tell you how many times Andy Sevagis and I have said, geez, we got to change this, we got to add this to the list. And even today, we said that.
Right. It's just, there's, it's hard that there's no official or formal mechanism for the list to be addressed.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So, all right, to be continued.
Yes.
All right. Any questions, any additional questions for Carrie?
Sorry.
Okay.
And then, sort of on a related note, I just wanted to share the update that the comprehensive plan, we're in the process of formatting it into its final format, working on that and hoping to be coming to this board. We, the plan is to have the final layout, have that reviewed internally by staff, and then have it go out to the comprehensive plan committee for their final blessing and review and final edits or changes, once it's in its final laid-out form. And then from there, having it come to this town board and start the process of reviewing it in the public, setting a public hearing, and moving toward adoption of the update. So I just wanted to give you that update, so that it is happening. And also, for anyone viewing at home, that staff is working on it. I'm said, I'm said staff in the current moment. And then, and then for, beyond that, internally, planning, zoning, building, everyone will have a moment to take a look at it. And then we'll go on to the planning, the comp plan committee, and then to the board. So we are working on it. It's a work in progress, and we appreciate everyone's patience. It's been a very busy year.
I understand, and I do know that you are down two people, so I'm.
Yeah.
Sensitive to that. Thank you very much for the update. Are there any questions for Carrie? Okay. That concludes our informational items. We are not taking any action on held items. Is there any old or new business before the board? Okay. Before we adjourn for the evening, we do need to move into executive session. I'd like to move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Public Officers Law 105 to discuss the employment of a particular person or persons.
Second.
Okay.
Motion.
Great. So this meeting will, the general meeting will stand adjourned until we return from executive session. And it is 7:46. Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to announce for the record that we are returned from executive session at 8:53 PM. There being no other business at tonight's work session, I would like to declare this meeting adjourned at 8:53 PM.